And the governing body for all other special and tax assessed districts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that are, oh, supposed to be heard at a specific time will be heard at that time and all other items may be taken out of sequence to, for staff and public availability or board availability. You guys can go ahead and stay in line there and sign up as you will be, but we're going to interrupt you for just a minute with the pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask Supervisor Gitlin to lead us.
Right hand over your heart and ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public access to Spanish, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice.
Thank you. Introduction to new employees? Any new employees in the crowd? For the county that is. How about council reporting out of any actions of closed session?
No reportable action today.
Okay. Before I request any deletions, corrections, or additions to, from board members, I'm going to tell you that on the consent agenda was item seventeen that deals with the Gasky Airport. We're going to pull that off consent, obviously, and have it as a standalone item. Are there any other items that you want to add to the agenda? Of course, in order to add something to the agenda and to take action on it, it has to have arisen subsequent to posting the agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Any such items? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and receive brief reports or announcements relative to the county of Del Norte from individual supervisors and I'll start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you. Well, last week, we attended a very significant, important community health assessments meeting sponsored by Sutter Coast Hospital, Sutter Health. Every few years, the needs are assessed in the county and the greatest void continues to remain that we need a psychiatrist in our community and we've been trying hard and it's, has not worked out and, but we're hearing that the advances made in telemedicine via video conferencing have made significant strides and the present time, those needs address those who are on Medi-Cal. So at this point, the options are still, are open and continue to seek the services of a psychiatrist. Funding remains intact from Sutter Coast Hospital. After the community health assessments need meeting, I joined the regularly scheduled once a month meeting of the Crescent City Del Norte Chamber of Commerce and the committee reports were delivered and foremost is the upcoming economic summit, which will be Friday, March twenty first, at the Elk Valley Rancheria. Monday, March third, supervisors were invited to a public information meeting in Eureka hosted by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. On the agenda discussed were three regulatory options which addresses the spit and shore fishing problem at the mouth of the Klamath. The area has experienced a very high level of shore fishing, spit fishing, and due to the configuration of the, the way the flow at the Klamath is, is going right now, this is a rare event, but it's creating some problems and the meeting, as I said, was held in Eureka. It was on a rainy night, so I've asked Fish and Wildlife to have that meeting up here in Crescent City, hopefully here at the Flynn Center, in a short period of time before any of these regulations are adopted. That same afternoon, I attended the pre-agenda solid waste management meeting. Sunday, this past Sunday, Angela hosted Wine and Cheese at the Sea. Seventy-five of our closest friends and relatives came by fundraising effort for the Del Norte County Republican Central Committee. I'm in the process of organizing a town hall meeting, which we will have at the fairgrounds on Thursday, March twenty seventh, for District One constituents. Also attended Republican Women Federated Luncheon, heard an update on the hospital by Attorney Bill Gray and local Realtor Ron Placetti. And also, I was sent this newsletter from Sutter Coast Hospital, Sutter Health, and it addresses critical access designation, and this is coming from CEO Linda Horn. The application has been accepted for critical access by the state and now awaits the federal governments here in the newsletter, which I'm presuming to be the Medicare Department. The membership application has been approved by the Critical Access Hospital Network and the overflow hospital was not identified at that time. And they're continuing to define regulatory requirements, appropriate contracts are now in place, optimizing the internal flow. This move toward critical access is moving downhill very rapidly. And this is causing a lot of concern for me personally. It's come to my understanding, twenty-four Sutter Coast Hospital beds will soon be removed from the hospital whence critical access is in place. So today, I'm going to ask our Board of Supervisors to direct our county councils to research and report to the Board by our next meeting, March twenty-fifth, the implications, both financial and legal, in seeking eminent domain status. I would ask our Board to so direct our council accordingly. Thank you.
Supervisor Hemmingsen.
Yes, thank you. I had a meeting with a fair board member and the Director of our fair about the possibilities that are going to be, that we may have as far as continuing our fair. As you know, the funding has ceased from the state and we're looking for options or ways to continue our, our local county fair. Then we later had a conference call with John Kierras from the Division of Fairs and Exhibitions, seeing, kind of get a feel for, for what they're doing and, and with the direction that they're going. He was not, not extremely helpful, that there was a lot of solutions out there that, that we'd be able to find, although he was hopeful that, that something would be out there. But I think he, I think he indicated that that division would basically cease to exist in the year two thousand sixteen, so there won't even be a Division of Fairs and Exhibitions, or possibly, there will not even be that division left anymore. So we'll, we'll be keep, keeping an eye on that and keep working. Attended the workshop, special meeting for the State of Jefferson, meeting that this, this Board had. Went to Sacramento for a Sustainable Forest Action Coalition meeting. Still continue to, continuing to discuss issues on forest management. In coming back from Sacramento, I learned that Fred Grant was doing some work for the city of, of Reading, and so I stopped and visited with him for an hour and a half or so. It was a good meeting with him. I was called into jury duty, so that took up a half a day for me. It was a lot of fun. Filled in for Chair Finnegan for agenda review. We had a meeting of the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority where we released the supplemental, or we're going to release this, probably release by now, the supplemental EIR for public review on the mitigation for the impacts for the runway safety area project. And yesterday, had a local mental health board meeting. I guess the most important thing was the discussion of the retirement of Gary Blatnick, who is going to July, retire on July the first, which is a pretty good impact, will be a pretty good impact to that. Also talked about, which is later in our gender, agenda, there's an acute inpatient psychiatric service facility that's opening in Reading that hopefully we will approve to be able to use that facility because those services are hard to find sometimes, so we're, hopefully we'll approve that. And that was it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I had a fairly busy couple of weeks. The senior center met and everything is going forward with our lawsuits still and we are revising personnel policies that are quite complex. The, and the, attended the special meeting with the Board of Supervisors and then I was off to Los Angeles. And while I was in Los Angeles, it was the Democratic Convention, but I was able to, I heard speeches from all of the constitutional officers, but probably more importantly, I was able to have some time with a dinner with Gavin Newsom and talk about some of our needs in Del Norte County. I also met with a breakfast with a small group of people with John Perez and Daryl Steinberg and Tony Atkins and Kevin De Leon on the needs of Del Norte County and talked quite a bit about education support and talked a lot about Highway one oh one and the need to bring everyone to the table to start figuring out how Last Chance is going to be funded. I also met, spent a couple of hours with Mike McGuire and Jim Woods, who, Mike is the candidate for State Senate in our region and Jim Woods is the candidate for Assembly. And we went over in detail all the different needs that we have in Del Norte County, and so that was very, very productive. And I met, at following that meeting, we then went back into session and I listened to the, the rest of them. I had a little bit of time with Deborah Bowen on the open voting laws and voter registration. The online voter registration was beyond anyone's, anyone's believable success where we were able to increase the number of Californians who take part in such an important process of voting. I want to announce that Congressman Huffman will be here on March twenty-ninth, which is a Saturday, and he want, he is going to hold an open town hall meeting on, and the topics will be preserving Social Security and how Medi-Cal, what, what the future of Medi-Cal is. So there'll be ads probably in the newspaper and on the radio coming, but people should try to attend that if they're concerned about what Social Security is doing and what Medi-Cal is doing, I mean Medicare, excuse me. It's going to be at the, the Redwood Room at the, at the, on Washington for Del Norte County Unified. And as I get more information, I'll try to get it out, but I'm pretty certain that they will run ads. And then I'm looking forward and hope everyone has reserved March twenty-second for the Harbor dedication because I think as a community, we should all turn out because what the Harbor has done in their rehabilitation from the tsunami is quite phenomenal and should be supported in that twenty-two million dollars circulated in our community, so I appreciate the work that they've done. Oh, and then I'm on my way after this meeting today to the Coastal Commission. There's really nothing on the agenda for us particularly, but there's a couple of important issues in Mendocino County in relationship to towers and being able to get accessed on their, on their telephones. And then after that meeting, I'm on my way to the twenty-third annual conference of, it's called the California Local Government Commission, and the, one of the issues is going to be healthcare and rural healthcare and the building healthy communities is going to be the lead in that. So I was able to get, they offered me a scholarship for that meeting and I'm looking forward to it and hopefully we'll bring back great information. Thank you.
Good. Supervisor Sullivan.
Yeah, I also attended the special workshop on the State of Jefferson, fielded numerous calls and emails regarding award airfield and item seventeen on the agenda. Had the honor of attending the ribbon cutting for the Smith River Gym, and those of you who have not seen that gym, it's a really impressive structure. It really is the nicest gym in Del Norte County now, and, which was cool because it was an achievement done by the community and a lot of different partners and, and the taxpayers. It is something that is, if you haven't had a chance, go out and take a look at it. It's a phenomenal facility. And I made my free throw, so our CAO had, he had a miss on that one, but anyway, we'll just, no, I made it, I made the free throw, so can't say that on my whole career, but. Attended the proactive financial committee and then there's another one, a follow-up meeting to that one coming up, because we really didn't come to a conclusion in, in the proactive financial committee. The, got a chance to see bits and pieces of the JC tournament, for those of you having been a participant several years ago in it, it's an enormous benefit to the community. The hotels, restaurants, everywhere was packed. It is really cool to see that amount of kids in the community and they're, they're all pretty pumped about it. So, great job to the Crescent City JCs on putting on another successful tournament. Also, I wanted to, on, in the same sport, got a chance to see my son's last, the basketball for rec ball, rec ball, for those of you who have not seen it or, or had a participant in it, which is probably most of us had a chance to be involved with it or another. John Horner and his staff have done a phenomenal job expanding that program and I think the youngest age we go now is, is it five? I think it goes all the way from five all the way up to sixth grade. The great thing on fifth and sixth grade, they get a chance to get some of the high school players to coach the team and I want to thank Stephen Moretti and Josh Gruden, who are my son's coaches, they did a great job with him and it's a pretty cool interaction between the high school program and the kids. And then attended awards ceremony last Wednesday, once again, a packed gym, getting to see the future athletes of, of Del Norte there, and great event, so, and that was it.
Good, thank you. I also had a few meetings. Seems like most of us were out of town for a good portion of last week or so. Had a meeting of the RDA, which is the Redevelopment Agency, closing it back up, or, or closing it up, the final business of the city, of Crescent City's Redevelopment Agency. Then had a, as everybody else did, attended the State of Jefferson workshop, did, participated in listening to some of the financial analysis and feasibility. Also attended the JC tournament, watched, I have a daughter that was doing cheer, just phenomenal for all the kids from everywhere that come, especially the local kids, they get to interact with these and find special friends and whatnot, not just the cheerleaders but the basketball, but all the coaches, all the families, all the parents who be commended along with the JCs. Not just an economic development issue, but just a real good community spirit issue. Met with the county council regarding tri-agency, had a proactive financial committee meeting. Apparently, I went to the second one, you went to the first one, so we did have it. And then I went back to Washington DC on behalf of WIR, which is Western Interstate Region, as well as this county, the State Association of Counties, to meet with the National Association of Counties for legislative days. We started with WIR Board Meeting, which is Western Interstate Region, which California is a member of, sit on the Transportation Committee on the National for NACO. We had a California caucus, we met with Senator Feinstein, Congressman Huffman, Congressman Thompson, the Senior Legislative Analyst for the Committee on Transportation, as well as the Director of Infrastructure for Barbara Boxer on the Transportation Committee MAP twenty-one. Just to give you an idea, and then we went over to the White House Executive Offices and met with the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs. The President had just released his budget, of which you'll be happy to hear that he included five years of secure rural schools payments. They had expired on Tuesday, which was the one-year extension, and now it's in the budget to have another five years, so should be great for our schools and for our roads. Had a congressional breakfast with Costa, Denham, Guaramendi, Lamolfa, Lamolfa couldn't make it, he was caught in the snowstorm, Gary Miller and Lofgren, but some of Lamolfa's staff was there. Issues, very briefly, that we discussed. Child welfare finance reform, Indian fetus trust reform, reauthorization of MAP twenty-one, all transportation issues, PILT issues, remote sales tax, SCAP, which is the alien, the reimbursement for the illegal immigrants that are in our jails, as well as the four oh four, which is the issue brief, which is the veggie, I call it veggie levitation, it's the levy vegetation removal, which impairs the integrity of the levies. We have one in Klamath, but not as bad as the Sacramento area, and then, of course, secure rural schools. Just a few things that we've been up to, so as you can see, we're busy. With that, CAO, do you have a report for us?
A brief one. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been working on a number of issues, obviously the mid-year budget, which is on today, that we'll discuss a little later. Staff interviews for an open position of the Clerk of the Board. We've been dealing with multiple MLUs and review and hopefully negotiating those to a point of solution. Dealing with the Community Development Block Grant, meetings with the public, obviously the proactive financial management committee met twice regarding the airport, sat as the hearing officer for a personnel hearing. And looking at the revegetation, we have an annual requirement to look at revegetation for the boat launch in the town site and there was some damaged vegetation and we're having to come up with a plan and revegetate that. And meeting with public defenders to kick off negotiations for their contract. I was also fortunate enough to be able to attend meetings at the new, or meetings, games at the new gym, and I was able to watch Smith River play three times. Can't overstate the impact on the community from the JC tournament and was able to talk to some visitors that came in. Obviously, they were impressed by the new facility, but I, I think what I got from it, from them was the, the welcome that they received into the community. They were very impressed by the kids, by the adults, by the participants that were generally around and it's a great, a great community boost and again, the JCs put on a great, a great tournament.
Just a side note, and not to get it wrong whether it was the Reds or the Whites, the most cherished trophy is the sportsmanship award that takes into how the coaches, the fans, the cheerleaders, the basketball players all behave, and the Redwood team won that award. It's the Armin Gunnarsson Award, so communities should be very proud out of all the schools and everything. Since we're a little bit ahead of public comment, we're going to go ahead and take the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda minus number seventeen?
Move for approval.
The move and approve to, the move and second to approve the consent agenda. Any public comment on any item that's on the consent agenda, noting that seventeen has been pulled? Okay, back to the Board. Any comments? Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. There are four budget transfers before us. Can I get a motion on those? Which is budget transfer oh two oh seven, oh two oh nine, oh three oh one, and oh three oh two.
Move to approve.
It's the move and second, and any public comment on these budget transfers? They are within the CSA lift station, the two thirty-two boat safety program, the public defenders budget, and the capital improvement budget. No discussion? Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, minus number twenty-one, I have a conflict of interest on that.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. With that, it brings us to the ten twenty-five time, which is public comment period. Any member of the public may talk on any item that is under the purview of the Board. However, if it is on the agenda like number seventeen for the airport, you might want to hold your comments until that time that that's brought up. Any public comment? I'm going to go here first and you next.
Sally Martin, and I'm speaking to you to realize and acknowledge that the most important local thing we have for this community is the matter of the hospital and whether it continues as an acute care or is reduced to the critical care. The original agreement was with Sutter Hospital and two of the conditions were that it could be made on the acute care and that the control be local. These have nothing more honored than Sutter Health and its standing home.
If it's reduced to critical care, citizens will have to pay for their transportation to be transported, oh, to the Bay Area. They're not going to send us to Eureka or to Ashland or to Medford. Who pays for that? The citizens do. What about children? Your sons, your daughters, your grandchildren? Who's going to pay for their parents while they stay there and their time off from work while they stay in motels? Who's going to do that? The individuals. Sutter Coast says they're losing millions? That's because it's going to the CEOs. It's not staying in the hospital. Which corporation takes over a losing company unless, that doesn't make good sense, unless they plan to divert the money to another of their interests? And that's the situation here. It's a selfish motive. It does not take into consideration the citizens of this community and involves us. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I recognize you next, please.
My name is Ed Edwards. Regarding the Sutter Coast Hospital situation, the residents of Del Nordi County deserve better. We are a remote and isolated county. The move to critical care will hurt, hurt us. Putting patients on an airplane to some larger city makes no sense. Just an example, my wife's parents were going to move here to be close to us, but when they heard about the hospital situation, they decided not to move to Crescent City. We must maintain the highest level of service. In all due respect, if you, the Board of Supervisors, are not doing everything possible to assure the Sutter Coast Hospital maintains the highest quality possible, you are not doing your job. Furthermore, I am highly doubtful that a nonprofit hospital that will not open their books is telling the truth. The residents of Del Nordi County deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Paul Adinam. Anyway, our local acute care hospital is essential to our community's health and well-being. The hospital is absolutely necessary to our ability to even live in Del Norte County. We need expanded services, not a smaller facility. I am requesting that you pursue the use of eminent domain as a means to keep our hospital as an acute care facility under local control. The recently proposed changes to Sutter Coast Hospital create a threat to our community's well-being. The power of eminent domain could be a useful tool to resolve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Gay McQuirter, and ironically, I wrote a letter to the editor that was published Saturday, which gave my reasons for keeping Sutter Coast Hospital, and ironically, Sunday night, there was an earthquake. My, my reasons were that we-
Please don't write any more letters.
(laughing) That we live with three major disasters waiting to happen. And if we downsize Sutter Coast Hospital to twenty-five beds, if there's a major riot at the prison, what do we do? You can only get medium-sized airplanes in here, and if you only have twenty-five beds, what are you going to do with them? A major earthquake, it can damage the airport, it can damage the roads, it can damage the tunnel, there's no way out of here. The only medical care would be Sutter Coast Hospital. If we have another tsunami, which is inevitable, as we all know, hopefully, it will not match nineteen sixty-four, but it could be even worse. Again, major damage to roads, et cetera, with no way out of here. Even in winter, we have a problem. There's been times when all three egresses out of here were out of commission and we were isolated. So downsizing that hospital can just cause us all kinds of major problems, not to mention the day-to-day things that we all face, a major flu epidemic. That hospital is it for us, and if it's downsized, we're in big trouble. I ask this Board, as a, as a last chance, if necessary, to declare eminent domain. Take that hospital back for we, the people.
Next, please.
My name is Ron Takedi. I am a long-term resident here and I, I find it interesting that we're at this crossroad. Corporations, from my experience, have no conscience whatsoever. It's all about the money and it's all about business. The families that live here, as you know, will be negatively affected by this conversion to critical care, from, to a critical care hospital from the acute care, and you can expect to be transferred if you end up in a hospital as soon as they need those beds because they're only going to be twenty-five beds. And you will go to San Francisco Bay Area and you will have your mom and your dad, if you, or your kids or whatever, come visit you at great expense, hotels and all that, and many of the people here simply can't afford it, with sixty percent of the people here being either older on Medi-Cal, Social Security, what have you, they're not going to be able to afford that additional expense. And I think unless we do something about that, I think we're going to be in serious trouble. This hospital property was originally donated as a, an acute care hospital that was to be locally governed, and if you research- And if you research the deed documents and the, the actual donation done by the hussies, uh, Bill Gray, our world-class attorney that lives here locally, did, uh, some serious research on this and he gave a speech at the Republican Central Committee, which I was, uh, I attended. And it's quite clear that he is, has done the research necessary. And eminent domain would actually be an option to take it back away from the corporation who's only gonna look for the almighty dollar. Uh, the economic impacts, as I gave this speech, are gonna be tremendous. And you will not be able to recruit an oncologist, a psychiatrist, or a rheumatologist here at just for a critical care hospital as you would if it was and remained a acute, acute care hospital. Uh, the loss of jobs will already ha, it's already had a negative impact. I talked to one of the employees in the billing department, was given a served a, a, uh, layoff notice and, uh, and this has already begun because the corporation intends to do it whether you like it or not. Secondly, uh, we need a resolution from this board, uh, to this indifferent corporate board who, uh, whose CEO sucks twenty-six million dollars off of, uh, the profits from this corporation to pay himself. And tell you the truth, uh, even, uh, the Red Cross, their chief executive only gets two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. So, there's plenty of room there for them to continue to operate. Uh, maybe they need to be, uh, recognized as a profit organization with, still what they're doing. Now, I know Martha, you've been on the, uh, edge for a long time on anti-growth. You're not for growth. But I need to tell you, if you allow your personal agenda to get in the way of what the community needs here, uh, it's gonna be a serious impact and it will affect your family. It affect my family and anybody that's in this room will be affected by this. It's a little hard to see sometimes, but I can tell you one other thing. I worked, uh, at an office next to the-
You're gonna ask me to wrap it up, Ron?
Okay, just a second. I worked at an office where the former CFO for Sutter Coast, he had a (inaudible) into Sutter Hospital facilities and-
You're over time.
He said, uh, they were profitable every single year. So I think the books are showing you may not be what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good morning. Thank you, supervisors. Um, I wanted, I could, Wes White-
Could you just identify yourself as?
Wes White, President of the Harbor Commission. And I thought it appropriate to do two things this morning. One is, um, I wanted to thank the CAO and your community development, um, manager to thank them for participating in the hiring of the new CEO, which we have done, as you know, 'cause Rich Young, our current CEO, is retiring. So I wanted to thank them publicly. So thank you, Jay and Heidi. And number two is I wanted to introduce you, more importantly, to our new CEO and harbor master, who is Charlie Helms. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charlie.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come before you. I'm really honored to, to be here now, be a part of the community at a wonderful state-of-the-art facility. And I look forward to working with all of you in the future to help improve the community. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Yeah. Gotta do Andy and then I'll do you. Okay.
Uh, I'm George Selman. Uh, we've been in this community since two-oh-three. And, uh, one of the main reasons we moved here was the fact that it had good medical facilities and we, uh, was talking about kind of moving here. In addition to the beautiful country and, uh, and also our relatives live here too. So, uh, there was other reasons. Anyhow, I don't understand this deed that the hospital holds, uh, and why is that not a legal deed? And why do they have to put up with all the other, uh, side of the story? You know, they got the deed, it's legal. Why can't they retake that hospital? It's their hospital, you know? That's the question.
Well, in my minimal amount of knowledge, unfortunately, the people that have been allowing it to happen to the hospital board, which don't open their meetings to the public. So they're, I'll explain when all the public comment is done, is the strategy that the Board of Supervisors is gonna be undertaking to, to work on that.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, just to me, we, my wife's in real estate, of course, like you. And, uh, a deed is a deed, you know? And it's a legal, uh, tool. And it should be, uh, it should be recognized as such. And why, that needs to be explained to our community, I think, a lot more than it is it has been in the past, okay?
I agree.
I love this community too, by the way.
Thank you. Next, please.
Andy Olson with the county. Uh, I believe in the fight against Sutter Coast. I totally think things are wrong. I have, uh, been a supporter. But I have a problem with eminent domain. When you use eminent domain, beca, that opens you up just like it did on the East Coast. I can take a shopping center away from, or I can take property 'cause the city wants to build a shopping center. If we open up a precedence of an eminent domain because we don't like what you're doing, so we're gonna take your property, where does that lead us to? We can take the property up in Gasky because we want an airport, so we can take everybody's property? I mean, there, that says that the city can do it, the county can do it. That is a bad precedent to set, to take somebody's private property because you don't agree with them. And if that's the avenue to go, or you decide to go in, think it very carefully of what can happen after the fact that you set that precedent. I'm all for fighting with Sutter Coast and I'm done.
Thank you. Next, please.
Uh, my name's Dave Howard. And, uh, first time I was up here in nineteen fifty-seven, I caught my first steelhead, junior in high school. Moved up in the early seventies. Uh, I had attended UCLA, played on a Rose Bowl team, uh, Dean's West, seven years. And, uh, when I first came up here, there were, there wasn't work available. Uh, so I pitched in with the county and did a lot of, uh, light iron work when it came to the budgets for several departments, did that two or three years. Uh, brought a, a fundraising circus up here for the Kiwanis Club that made a lot of revenue that was spent in the community. Um, and I like it here. What's going on with the Sutter Host management team? Um, I'm not hearing good things. I'm not hearing that we can't look at their financial information or their books. Everybody likes to see what's being spent where and for what and who's getting how much. Uh, that's not acceptable to me. Uh, they're removing, uh, board members that disagree with, uh, with the management of the hospital and putting in their own parrots that speak their language and accept what they want. Do not like this. This, this isn't acceptable. Um, the management wants to reduce medical services in this area. Uh, and they want, uh, to transport, um, us to other outside, uh, areas where they have locations to give us medical service. Uh, don't like the idea of being told that, uh, no, you can't do this, you gotta go to our facility and this is where you're gonna have to go from now on. Uh, not a good idea to me. Um, let's see. Sutter Coast, uh, management is a very large political entity in Northern California. They can give our kids work, they can give us work, they can promote, promote political careers and agendas. Uh, be, be very cautious of people bearing gifts to get you to agree with what they want. This is our community. I think we should run it, we should control it. Uh, I'm not happy with this management team. It looks like, uh, could be, uh, similar to a hostile corporate takeover, doing what they want, not what the people want. Um, it's, in a sense, to me, I'm seeing it as thievery. Uh, they're very good at, uh, brainwashing and allowing, uh, the community their sweep with everything's fine and wonderful. And, uh, so that's about it. Uh, solutions, um-
Ask you to wrap it up, Dave.
Yeah. I'd say disassociate from them would be my choice. Uh, eminent domain's been around, around a long time. And, uh, so, and I would ask you for a resolution stating that you're behind keeping the hospital.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. One more, apparently.
Okay, thank you. Tom Stewart from Gasky, uh, as listening to this subject matter of Sutter Coast, I'm here for a different reason and hopefully I get to talk about both. Um, but I've been listening to the Sutter Coast, um, issue for quite a while and then the light bulb went off. I came from Pelican Bay State Prison after twenty years, had an opportunity to work as a transportation sergeant. There's some questions that you may be able to throw out to, in negotiations. Um, the transportation of inmates for medical care went from Sutter Coast Hospital, which way, time ago, uh, the state of California and Pelican Bay built the ICU for Sutter Coast Hospital. Uh, millions and millions of dollars. Uh, since the contract to do that medical service at Sutter Coast has been sent to Tri Counties and Grants Pass, over to Broke Valley, uh, primarily now Gold Beach, Oregon. Um, as a taxpayer, which usually don't know that, um, the amount of money spent on transportation of inmates for medical care is unbelievable. It's astronomical, which now does not go to Sutter Coast. Um, the early negotiations were the state wasn't paying their bills on a timely manner. Well, if I'm not gonna get the million dollars that you owe me for the three inmates we just transported-
Three.
For a million, uh, then you're gonna lose your transportation contract and we're gonna take them to Gold Beach. If you haven't been listening to the radio, that, uh, the Curry County Radio, Gold Beach is expanding its medical facility as if it were a giant Walmart store right now. Um, Gold Beach is going to have better medical care there than we have at Sutter in the long term. So that is a question that you may be able to throw out there is, why did you let that contract go with the state of California so that you don't receive those monies, um, from the state for the care of Pelican Bay inmates? Um, there is a listing online. If you go, it takes hours and hours to get there to find out of the five-hundred-and-eighty million dollars annually that is spent on transportation of inmates for medical care. Uh, that was a lot of money that went to Sutter Coast through that contract and they let that go for some reason, which I don't know. But I believe it's because of the, um, lack of payment on a tim, timely schedule. So that's, uh, my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name's John Breiner. I live up in Gasky. And you're gonna hear about Sutter Coast again, like everything else. I need, uh, I'd like to see the board expand, uh, uh, and do whatever they can to stop this critical care access. I can speak to the transportation costs, 'cause I was in the hospital in January and it cost me, uh, they flew me down to Napa and it cost fifty-seven thousand dollars and forty-nine cents. Lot of money to fly me one way, you know? And that was the ho, with the ambulances and everything else. Um, also, the, they're not, uh, their emergency room, uh, doctors are not preferred providers. So instead of me paying, um, seventy-five dollars for that emergency room visit, it was like two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars that I'm required to pay. It's just, uh, I, I don't, I don't understand how they can be cutting back, uh, this hospital, um, services and things. When I've been down to Napa and St. Helena, California, is a smaller town than Crescent City, but they have the Adventist Heart Institute and they're expanding, they have a cancer department, the whole shot. And they seem to run their hospital and they have less people than we do. So, this, uh, Sutter Coast being nonprofit, well, I think it's, they say nonprofit in words, but in their actions, they're for profit. And this, they were in the black up until two-thousand-and-ten and then we hear nothing more and all of a sudden they're in the red now. I think it's this, um, this secrecy is, even if it's, even if everything is on the up and up, the secrecy is not doing the community any good. Why don't they open up and explain it all? But with, what they're doing is, why, this is all these people are getting up in arms about. Well, I'm fifty-eight years old and I'm telling you, you know, I love this area, but man, you have to be flown out for proper medical care. What's that all about? You know? It's just crazy. And then my family, we got, they have to get the motels like everybody else. I'm just reiterating, but I'm just saying, I've actually been through this. And it, you know, I ain't got all the money that these people, I've gotta sit there and talk to these people and explain to them, hey, man, I ain't got that much, you know? I only have a certain set income. So I really want the board to find some way, whatever it takes, that we need to take this back. He's right, they're a corporation, they don't care, it's, bottom line is money. And I tell you what, as you know, money's fine, right? But it's sometimes, there has to be a little empathy for other individuals and the situations that they're in. And I don't see Sutter Coast doing that. So I'm all for this eminent domain, you know? I mean, yes, you might set a precedent, but I tell you what, when somebody's being a jerk, man, you, you gotta step in and do something. And that's my opinion, that something needs to be done.
Just gonna wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So much for public comment. Before we leave public comment, I'm just gonna let the public know, uh, that not only has the Board of Supervisors weighed in strongly with written letters in the past, uh, not just to Sutter Coast, but to the hosp, uh, healthcare district as well as the hospital board, it is quite apparent that the hospital board is not working in the best interest of this community. They're working for the interest of Sutter Coast. I have directed, uh, aside from the normal two-by-two, that we will be engaging in an ad hoc two-by-two. The two supervisors on that ad hoc two-by-two are Supervisor Hemmingson and Supervisor Sullivan, that will be working with county council, that will be working with an ad hoc committee from the healthcare district and their attorney, as well as an ad hoc committee of the city, uh, and their attorney, to develop strategies, what may or may not include, um, more resolutions, eminent domain, formation of political subdivisions, whatever. Um, it's being developed and it's being worked on, rest assured. Uh, the battle lines are drawn and we're on your side, so. With that, we're gonna go to a ten-thirty item. I'll talk about some fun and uplifting stuff, (laugh) uh, which is a tsunami safe, know your zone, tsunami preparedness week, presented by Cindy Henderson. Before she does that, we're on the consent agenda. We had a proclamation there, a resolution. What do we got there, Roger? Supervisor Gitlin's gonna read this for us.
We do. We have a, a proclamation. The Del Norte County Board of Supervisors proclaiming the week of March nineteenth to twenty-eighth as tsunami preparedness week. Shall I read this whole, uh, document?
Yes.
Absolutely. Whereas California's long coastline, its proximity to other coastal states with offshore earthquake faults and its location on the Pacific Ring of Fire make it vulnerable to tsunamis, and whereas California has been struck by more than two dozen tsunamis with waves three or more feet high since eighteen twelve, including fifteen that have caused damage, including the devastation of the Crescent City Harbor, March eleventh, twenty-eleven, and whereas a dozen residents of Crescent City, California were killed by the tsunami generated by the nineteen sixty-four Alaska earthquake, and whereas tsunamis are caused by underwater earthquakes and landslides that can occur anytime and with little warning, and whereas education and awareness are fundamental in saving lives in a tsunami event, and whereas the state of California, the National Weather Service, the county of Del Norte, and the city of Crescent City will commemorate the anniversary of the nineteen sixty-four tsunami by testing their ability to issue a tsunami warning for Del Norte County via the emergency alert system on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen, between eleven o'clock and twelve noon. And whereas the governor's office of emergency services hopes to expand participation for all coastal cities in the test in the twenty-fourteen and beyond, now therefore it be proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Del Norte that the week of March nineteenth to twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, as tsunami preparedness week in Del Norte County on this eleventh day of March twenty-fourteen.
Thank you, Supervisor Gitlin. And you can present that to Cindy. And then Cindy, I'm gonna have you do the, your presentation, it's, um, the timing is coincidental. I think today is the anniversary of the Fukushima, the Japanese tsunami, uh, that wiped out hundreds of thousands, was it?
Yes. Thousand, thousand people.
Go ahead.
Yes. So tsunami safe week, this is a community effort that's being put on by the city council, chamber of commerce, historical society. I, I can't tell you, we have about sixty agencies that have been meeting for the last few months to try to do this commemorative fiftieth anniversary of the sixty-four tsunami that happened on March twenty-eighth. Um, it devastated our community, we wanna take the opportunity to educate the community and then have some fun and learn about it, um, as we go. So I'm just gonna present to you just a few minutes of what we have planned for that week. Educational presentations, we've already done the Miracle Boat presentation. If you've not had a chance to see that, I would love to invite the kids here, um, from Del Norte High School to come and present to you. I think it was a very important trip to Japan. We got back a couple of weeks ago. It was amazing, amazing, um, um- It was amazing, amazing experience. Personal one-on-one education on disasters of a business is our agency. We have Dennis Louie that's going out and he's gone to dozens of businesses and agencies doing just education one-on-one for your agency. If you want to do it at a nighttime, you want a daytime, if you've got three employees, it doesn't matter, we will go out and do the education. We've also done a tsunami basics for first responders. That's one thing we learned going to Japan is, is the remorse, the survivor remorse. Mental health is a big, big issue over there, three years later, and for the first responders not to be able to go in and help people. So we wanted to make sure that our first responders are well taken care of and they really understand that it's okay not to try to go in and try to save everybody until the disaster is over, until it's safe to go in. Tsunami awareness for fishermen and mariners, that's coming up March 21st at 10 o'clock at the harbor. This is really important. We know how important fishermen are to our, to our community and we want them to be safe in a tsunami, so that is a really good piece. History of Delnor County tsunamis and lessons learned, March 24th at 5:15 at Crescent Fire. A really good class put on by Lori Dangler and Troy Nicolini and we will talk about all the lessons learned for how many years on what, and it's really centered on Delnor County. Dennis Louie has also gone out and we now, in our hotels, we did this a few years back, that every hotel has a map of sorts of tsunami, tsunami zones, and so he's gone back out to any newer hotels, he's updated any other hotels that are missing brochures and things. So, you know, not only do you have, where do you evacuate in a fire, but you also have where to evacuate in a tsunami, which is super important in our community. We have a historical guided tsunami safe walking tour coming. It's an eight-point downtown Crescent City guided tsunami tour. It's going to be happening two times. Wednesday, we're doing it for all the eighth graders in Delnor High, in Delnor School area. They are actually going to do about 350 to 400 kids will be taking this downtown guided tour. You'll actually go from different kiosks. Lighthouse Repertory Theater will be narrating from the dark disaster story. They'll be talking about different areas of downtown Crescent City and what happened there in 1964, really interesting. For the public, it's open March 22nd and we start at 10 a.m. and we go, the tours start every 15 minutes up until 12 o'clock when we're going to take a very, very important break and go to the ribbon cutting at 1 o'clock for the tsunami resistant harbor, first ever in the United States, which is very exciting. That is going to be a real, really nice thing. They are changing actually the curriculum in the schools this week for tsunami week and we're adding in earthquake and tsunami preparedness all the way from kindergarten all the way up to high school. We also will have educational movies added to Channel Four, the school television lineup, and they'll have a lot of different information on those for people that can't get out. Other activities we're working on, March 23rd, we have a tsunami surge fun run, really kind of going to be fun. We want as many kids as possible, as many adults in this. We actually are running from the pool up towards the rec hall, so you're running away from the tsunami, but we're doing obstacles. So there'll be, you know, cars in the way, there'll be downed power lines that you'll have to go around. There's actually going to be a boat up on a trailer that you'll have to stop, ask, answer a question about tsunamis, you'll get a prize and then keep going. So it's something really exciting for the whole family to do. I plan on being there. Disaster preparedness pet walk, learn what it takes to make sure you have your pets ready for a disaster, will happen at beachfront starting at 12 o'clock on the 23rd. We have lots and lots more things that planned. There's a banner hopefully going up right now, thanks to Charter Communications, across Highway One, down across from Northwoods Restaurant. That'll be up all week. Objective, very much objective was this, to try to get as many NOAA weather radios in each of our homes, so we've been doing a lot of giveaways on the radio. We're really pushing NOAA weather radios, Walmart, Ace Hardware, they're all carrying the NOAA weather radios. We want people to understand that's your own personal siren for your house. So for, very inexpensive, you can go in there, you can get one of these. We've got a mural going up on the side of the cultural center that'll show the 21-foot surge that happened in 1964. It's a great photo opportunity for tourists as they come into town, but to really understand this is how high this surge got back in 64. Finally, to close it off, we'll be doing a full-scale live code community-wide evacuation like what we discussed. It will happen March 26th, it's a Wednesday at 11 a.m. The sirens will go off, you will see civil air patrol flying across, emergency alerts will go across the TV, the radio, the NOAA weathers will go off, and we are asking people that live in the zone to walk out of the evacuation zone. This is going to emulate a large-scale earthquake off our shore, so it's super, super important that you practice what we talk about so that you don't ever have to think. And if we have that earthquake, which happened a couple of days ago, that's a really good reminder that we live in earthquake country. Red Cross is going to be, will have three different shelters set up and so people can actually walk up to the rec hall or Lighthouse Community Church or in Smith River at the community center across from the casino where you can see what a shelter will look like and you will see the small amount of items that you get when you walk into a shelter and you might be expected to live there for a couple of weeks. So they will show you what a nice go-bag looks like and something that you need to really think about if you're asked to leave your home in some type of event like that. So this community is considered tsunami capital USA. You don't have to say anything except Crescent City and they go, oh, you're known for tsunamis. I think we can embrace that distinction, use it one week a year to educate our community and our visitors. I think the tragedy of 1964 tsunami, I don't think we need to let that hold us back. We were considered the comeback town USA and I think we still are. I think what's really important, we take that title and we educate people on tsunamis and earthquakes, but also show them all the other beautiful reasons to come to Delnor County and experience everything that we have to offer. So I'm really hoping that everybody gets involved in tsunami week. All the flyers that I talked about can be found at preparedelnor.com and it'll tell you times, how to register, everything you want to know, or you can give me a call. Questions?
Cindy, I just want to commend you on all the work you've done in the past couple of years and really this, you've made this community stand out statewide as well as nationally. And I'm not just talking about the recognition they're going to get at the harbor for the first tsunami, you know, resistant harbor, but I think weren't we the first community to be tsunami-ready? And since you've taken over as OES, it's just phenomenal job and thank you very much.
You're welcome. It takes the whole community to do this.
I understand.
It really does.
Takes a leader.
Thank you.
Takes a motivator and you've done a good job. Good job, thanks Cindy.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we had public comment, what are you guys doing here? With that, let's take item number 17, it was on the consent agenda, which is to approve and authorize the chair to sign the grant application for the California Air, to airports program, the CAAP, for obstruction removal at Ward Field as requested by the airport administrator. What we're going to do is we're going to hear from staff first, then we're going to field questions and input from supervisors to staff. We're going to hear from, not only Heidi, you're going to kick it off, but if we want to hear from the airport staff as well, and then we'll hear public comment.
Yes, I am, I'm Heidi Constal, Delnor County Community Development Department. I'm here kind of to speak, at least initially, on behalf of the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. The request before you is to accept a Caltrans grant in the amount of $113,000 in order to allow the airport authority to hire someone to remove some trees in the Gaski Ward Field area. The amount of $113,000 will cover, according to airport staff, the removal of trees immediately adjacent to the airport where rights of entry had been granted. This area was covered under a notice of exemption, which was approved by the county's environmental review committee. Any tree removal beyond the area immediately adjacent to the airport will be covered under a separate environmental review as part of a separate application for funding.
Okay, do you want to repeat that? Because what I'm hoping to do with the presentation by staff is answer questions that people might have been wanting to ask.
Got you. Okay. The amount of money that is available will only cut a certain number of trees. The airport authority, as far as I know, has rights of entry to properties immediately adjacent to the airport. That would cover the amount of money that they have available to them. The area that the trees will be removed are covered under the notice of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, which was approved by the county's environmental review committee in September 2012. Removal of trees beyond this area would be covered under a separate environmental review. We've already, the planning division has already informed the airport authority that an environmental document would need to be prepared, including a biological assessment to address any impacts to the trees, which would determine which trees, which trees may not come out.
So there was a whole lot of trees that were marked and identified. So in hindsight, actually what we did was spend money to have the survey done of everything that fell within that, even those that the environmental impact report had not been done yet.
That is correct.
So because the money was available.
Yes. Whenever the county planning division was approached to do the environmental review, we were only looking at a very narrow scope along the airport runway, immediately adjacent on the private properties. Then as the survey, the full survey that was authorized through this grant identified that it actually went far beyond.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when Caltrans Aeronautics came to the county and said that there's an issue, they were non-specific. And so rather than going out and doing a portion of it now and having Caltrans come back later, that was the reason we went and identified everything now, so Caltrans can't come back and say, well, now you have to go survey that property over there. So it was a cost savings item that now we know the full possible scope in ad finitem of what would, could possibly be impacted.
I believe that to be true.
Okay. Do you have any other staff that, Mr. Bernard, does he want to weigh in or?
I believe maybe we'll listen to public comment and perhaps he'll weigh in after that.
Okay.
Heidi, I have a question. What is the, how many trees are going to be cut down? Do we have a number? It's 338 remarked or 300, I think it was over 300.
I think roughly half of them are within the area that is covered within the NOE, the notice of exemption. How many of those trees are on the properties that have granted rights of entry? I don't know.
Right.
But we're not going to be going onto private property without the permission of the property owner.
In the, in the process of cutting back, I've hear removal and I'm hearing cutting back, are stumps going to be left there?
That's a good question.
At what height are they being cut?
From what I understand, they have inventoried all the trees and there's a dimension in which the, the tree needs to be either topped or removed and I would imagine, not an arborist based on the plant species, I mean, topping may not be an option, removal may be the only, but there are, all of this has been documented.
Heidi, I do have, you and I talked before the meeting on this and I've got to say it's, the lack of communication up till now and the amount of confusion caused in the process, just, quite frankly, and not to point fingers at the airport authority, I don't think they've done a good job presenting exactly what the project is. And I, even in the documents I've gotten today, it doesn't tell me who, you know, where are the parcels lands that are going to be affected? What is the $113,000? All I hear is, well, we've got some money, we want to use it and we want to cut some trees back, but it doesn't say this is the scope of work. Because right now you get a lot of residents out there that think 338 trees is the entire scope of work. And what we talked about earlier is you're going to need an environmental doc to go to the, to the full scope of the work. And I, I just, I'm really disappointed actually in the presentation as to, I appreciate your, your Q and A, but they're just, I don't have enough information on this thing. I'd be.
How many public hearings did you hold out in Gaski to get that information?
We had a, we had a, we had a public meeting out there and then they've had a couple residents at the airport, but there were a lot of questions that weren't answered in that public meeting. I mean, we, and a lot of finger pointing going on as to, well, Caltrans is saying this, the airport authority is saying, county's saying this, and so you got residents out there that are really confused about the scope of this project.
We got residents right here then.
Yeah, you got residents right here, a lot of them are here, but I think, I would be, I would, and I know we got to open it for public comment, but I would move the table until the next meeting because I had, I had sent an email to Mr. Bernard yesterday saying, what is the deadline on accepting this money? And the 25th is the absolute deadline. But I want to make sure people are clear that we're talking, the scope of the project I believe is 100 trees and how many property owners are we talking about that it'll be immediately affected with trees on their property?
I believe it, I'd have to get that information from the airport authority. I don't know. So if you table it to the 25th, what we could do is put together a map showing the properties that we have the rights of entry for and an estimate on the number of trees.
I would be inclined to do that. That, that's motion I'm putting out there.
Well, as the rules of the meeting go, if you want to table it, that means these fine people aren't necessarily going to get to weigh in, so you might wait until you hear from your constituents before you tell them to be quiet. Even if you are a lame duck.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Let's open it up to public hearing, actually public comment, this is not a public hearing. And why don't we call off the names? If it's just, if it's a question, we'll go ahead and notate the questions. I would ask staff if they can be answered immediately, fine. If they can't, then we'll take it and bring it back. If there's a motion later to table till the 25th and bring it back to you at that time. Of course, you'll also be notified individually if you individually ask that question to get an answer to you. If it's just opinion, please keep it brief. You aren't recognized unless you're first on the list. Hey, I'm just speaking for the one that's saying, hey, I was number one. So with that, let's, let's go through the list here.
Ed Edwards.
Is Ed here?
Yes.
Did you want to speak on that?
And if you don't want to speak and you want to defer it till later, that's fine too. Or you want to read Ron's prepared statement, you can do that.
No, that's okay. Regarding the, we're, we're just talking about the trees now, right? The cutting of the trees?
Yes, right.
I am not a logger, however, I'm familiar with the logging industry, having lived over in Shasta County, in the mountains around there. And the cost per tree, there's something wrong there. There's some money going into, my own opinion here, into somebody's pocket that is, if you figure it out on the cost per tree for the removal of those trees, there's something wrong in River City here, or in this case, in Ocean City, okay? And I know that to be a fact.
Thank you. Next, please.
You might clarify, Tony, you might clarify as to, folks are here to talk about Sutter or on that list.
No, they, they're paying attention.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Ron? Okay. Don Gillespie?
Hello, Don Gillespie, Crescent City resident. And just, let's see, before my intended statement, I just want to say, based on all of your staff reports and all the things you guys have been doing, just as what, past two weeks, I want, I just want to take a moment to thank each of you for what you're doing, involvement in this community and the decisions you're trying to make. And just want to make a pointed comment, just to try and counteract some of the negative placid comments. Martha, thank you for your careful deliberations and thoughtful, thoughtfulness in your decisions you helped make for this community. Regarding the situation in Gaski, thanks Heidi for kind of clarifying. It appeared to me before coming here today that part of the confusion, Mr. Sullivan, for what's been going on, is it seems that possibly members of our planning commission and the desire to cut through the red tape have avoided, tried to avoid the SEQA process. And the SEQA process are laws on the books, as you well know, that are intended to inform a community and involve a community in decisions being made. And so it seems like the SEQA process is really important here and I'm happy to know that the public, the review is going to take place and I hope it involves every property owner in Gaski. And the second point is, you know, obviously you have some property rights issues here. People are really concerned about their rights as property owners and so it's a, you know, serious concern that people are feeling that they're being told they got, you know, somebody's got to come in and tell them to start cutting on their own property without their permission. That's just, I'm glad to hear that that's not going to happen. For clarification, it's come to my attention in a kind of a roundabout way that there's a possibility, and this is kind of a question for the board, that the $12,000 that the county is spending on this project, is that in any way related to Title III funding? It is Title III. And how does that fit Title III? I don't.
You'd have to ask staff.
I think it was fire suppression.
Fire suppression with the airport?
Title III is educational funding, is it not?
Go ahead.
The original Title III money had a lot of categories to be able to apply and I think Heidi could probably answer, but I think it was for fire suppression and not suppression because you're thinning or doing whatever there, but by being able to have that airport as the site for the fire, if and when we get a fire up there, that's where we can use it as the center for command.
And that's under Title III guidance?
Yeah, that was the first round of Title III money. We're still chipping at that. The other is primarily educational.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Next, please. Next, please.
Donald Bruce.
Good morning. Got a frog in my throat. Good morning, I'm Donald Bruce. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you all for showing up today so we can address our concerns. And I especially want to thank Roger Gitlin for giving us a phone call and the information that we've given him. The way I see the problem right now is, well, first of all, let me say, I would encourage you to just end this thing today, vote no on the funding because there's a myriad of problems from the start to beginning. I'm sure most of you are aware of those and the other people will be speaking to those. There's so many problems with this project that it should be canned and started over. First of all, the county's already stated that they're not going to go on the people's property that are not going to allow access. Well, of all the people I've talked to up there, out of about 17, I think one or two might allow to have access for this project. So if you can't access the trees, there's no project. So there's no, from right there, there's no reason to be moving forward on it. The second point I wanted to make was, I think there's a California Code of Regulations, 3553 B8, if I remember right. And this has to do with the fires, using it for fire suppression. If you have, that code allows you to have an airport without a public use permit. So if somebody tries to use the argument that we need this open for fire suppression and we have to have this project done for that, well, that, in my opinion, is simply not true. Then there was one other point I wanted to make. What was the other point? Oh, yeah. There's another public utility code, I think it's, I have it written down, 61223 or something like that. And it makes it sound like in special circumstances, the aeronautics division can work with counties because of the special circumstances. This is a special circumstance in this case because you have an airport, I call it an airfield, that's in a valley between two steep mountains. It's not your typical airport on a large, flat area. And what's, what makes it even more unique is you have homes located very close to the airport. You go around the country and you just don't find homes this close to the airport. If you review the FFA regulations, when they put in new airports, they make it very clear to the counties what they can have on the outside of it. What could have happened years ago is the county could have bought all that land up there and then they would have had control of all that land and done what they want. But they didn't. They allowed homes in there to build right next to the airport. So, and there's also county code saying you can't cut the trees. So anyway, looking at all those factors, it looks like it's a dead end and...
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. I would just urge you to vote no on this and start over some other time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good morning. Thank you for giving Gaski residents the opportunity to talk before you this morning on this issue that we find very important to us. And again, Supervisor Gitlin, thank you for your personal phone call. That was, that really was nice. Appreciated it. This has been a really difficult problem to try and understand. I sent the supervisors last week kind of a, sort of like a flow chart on my process of thinking this thing through since the February 22 meeting that we had out in Gaski. And although I've lived next to that airport in close proximity for 21 years, I haven't fully understand, understood the issues surrounding it and for the property owners around there. And it has become like this puzzle that day after day, another piece comes to fit into this puzzle and bring some clarity to what we're dealing with. I agree with what my husband just said. I think you ought to just not vote for the funding this morning because I don't think you're going to be able to do this project as you are supposed to under procuring these funds because people just are not going to let you on their property. There is a, we took a trip up to Brookings Airport yesterday. I wanted to see what that airport looked like and, I mean, it was devastatingly awful. I don't know how many of you have seen that one. It looks like a concentration camp with two rows of barbed wire around, these horrible buildings that are rusted, and it looks like a viable airport that gets way, way, way more use than our Gaski Airport. So as a resident in Gaski contemplating that you have some vision of turning our community into a ugly, treeless airport as such as in Brookings is heartbreaking. Anyway, I'm just saying that that is something down the road, if this project is moving forward into more of these little piecemeal section to create an airport in a community that already is vibrant and is existing in a very unique place, I think would be very, very sad. And I truly hope that you listen to the other speakers here who have very pertinent information and don't vote for the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jerry Muni? Jerry Muni from Gaski. I'm more confused than ever now. First of all, you've got to understand, nobody in Gaski wants to lose the airport. We know how important it is. But it makes no sense to formalize this, finalize this grant when there's not sufficient funds and there's no way it can be completed in three years. First of all, you haven't got very many right of entries. I wonder what that would be broken down per tree, like the one man suggested. And there's no clearance obstruction east of Firehouse Road until more environmental studies are done, so it doesn't make sense to me. And also, I just have a question for you guys. Is it true that the county or someone in the county gets a percentage off of each grant that's received?
I can't be specific on this one, but I know that part of the cost or part of the revenue of the grant goes to the administrator of that grant who's responsible for all the reporting, not just the filing, but the reporting and the follow-up and the close out of it.
And do you know who the administrator of that grant is?
Well, the previous grant administrator retired, so I'm not sure who the last board meeting.
I think the question though is there's no extra money coming to that person. It's built into their current salary. So there's no bonus or anything like that with that.
Yeah, I guess most specifically, it's not a specific individual.
Well, it seems like a lot of money for what you can't do. That's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Becky Haye.
One thing I inherited from my mother was a voice that carries, so I don't think I need the microphone.
You do for the audience that's listening at home.
Your mother would be proud, but you do.
My mother, the mayor, would be proud.
Yes.
I'm a pen and paper person.
Becky, you are going to need to speak into the microphone because the folks at home and watching on the computer can't pick you up.
Okay. How do I do it? Am I good? Okay. Good afternoon, Supervisors, Chair Finnegan. We have a lot of shared concerns regarding the proposed Ward Field obstruction removal project. I'd like to use my time to talk about the Gaski community itself. Not only do we know who our neighbors are, we care about one another as well. And while I am not an affected property owner per se, what happens to those I care about does affect me. At last week's planning commission meeting, several Gaski residents spoke about the proposed project during public comment. Our intent was to inform and share information as we have with you. I was offended by county council's dismissive remark that it wasn't those trees, it's the 100 trees over there. And yet, no research had been done to address the .5 wild and scenic Smith River NRA river quarter. Since we're talking about 338 trees on private land, which is the scope of the project, I've chosen the Ruggles family as my point of reference. Working hard, saving money, buying a piece of land, building a home, looking out your bedroom window on the banks of the Smith River and seeing a bald eagle on one of those trees is an accomplishment. Watching your children grow and thrive in that environment is a blessing. Enjoying the beauty and privacy of all that you have created is nurturing. Being told 20 years later that 17 of those glorious trees have to come down because they're a safety issue but requires right of entry is absurd. Caltrans cannot fund this project of cutting trees on private land with a SEQA document that is basically for mowing grass at the airport on county property. A tree is a tree, is a tree on private land. SEQA is not appropriate. Thank you for your service and your time.
Next, please.
Eileen Evermore. Hi, my name is Eileen Evermore. I have been a resident on Gaski Flat Road for the last 40 years. I have watched the airport transform from a natural sort of pasture, meadow land with maybe one cabin and one house to this residential area where the, I am not directly affected because I live on Gaski Flat Road, unless of course, we consider now that many of the trees on Gaski Flat Road are now tagged for that. And they're way out of the area of safety. I see this as Caltrans looking at, oh, well, we've got this grant here, let's find a project and a way to spend the money. Instead of looking at the people and residents of Gaski that come to you and say, "We have a problem. We need some money to solve this problem." And in terms of Gaski Airport, it's way out of most airport restrictions and FAA restrictions and the state and all of that. It's really up to you people here in, us in the county. In terms of the number of flights that go in and out of our little airport, maybe one or two flights a week. And most of those people are Gaski residents who fly their own airplanes and who are experienced pilots. And I don't think that their input was even given to this project. I would like to see, have them give some input to see if this really is a problem, a safety issue. Also, the firefighting problem, so-called. I have lived in Gaski during the time when we were set to be evacuated six out of 10 years because of fire danger. During that time, the airstrip was not used for airplanes. It was either covered with pup tents from smokejumpers, firefighters from all over the state who are here to help us, first aid, all kinds of things, helicopters with huge buckets that were coming down on the airstrip and dipping water out of the river or getting water from trucks that were there. These trees that have been tagged have very little to do with safety, at least from my experience and from what I have personally observed there. And so I'm not exactly clear about a lot of the laws, but I think it's been very ill-considered and ill-researched and that this is a rush to judgment on the part of the planning commission, who by the way, has offered variances to all of these rules for special interests such as building Valhalla, which is right in the airstrip, and even putting this property in. So you've encouraged all these people by allowing them to build their homes and now you're telling them that they have to cut down their trees if they want to stay there. They've already cooperated by cutting down trees, reducing their property line and changing their boundaries.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
This is the end.
Thank you.
My end, and I hope the end of this project.
Next, please.
John Brunner. My name's John Brunner. I live in Gaski also. And I have flown in and out of the Gaski airports and I don't understand why any of these trees got to go. That's it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Tom Stewart again. Gaski, California. Was hoping to hear from more people before I got to come up here. But anyway, the myriad of questions that I could pose to the board and to all the other departments that are involved would take 30 minutes instead of three. So you have listened to most of this. The amount of information that is contained in the community of Gaski right now would assist Gretchen immensely. We are probably in possession of 90% more information than Gretchen has. I would ask all of you, before another meeting, to vote on the grant funding for this project to visit the site, whether it's in your district or not, because of what you will see that you're making a determination on. It is expansive when you look at it from a private property standpoint. The grant fundings, I'm confused with Ms. Constle. The $113,000 is for a different project. The other 50% of the trees will have to have a SEQA review for another grant process, which either way, we'll have one or two fights on this issue come up. One, the first clearing, and then on the second clearing, if that's my understanding. There is a figure out there right now of $438,000 for the total completion of the full project. She also, Ms. Constle, also said something, we have the right of entry forms. I don't think you've got the rescinding notices yet of all right of entry. And so with that said, and I hear people say, "You won't be coming on the property to cut trees." You're not going to be there. Any of the contractors that do bid for this project are not, will not come on to the private properties in Gaski to cut, remove, alter, or lower a tree. How that will occur, that's, we'll wait to that to be known. But I am here today to speak for the community district. Nobody is coming on that property to cut. Period. No matter what legality you throw out there, who you bring is going to be the response of how much money the county wants to spend to get this project done. And it won't be funding money, it'll be legal money. Because nobody's coming on our properties to cut the trees. It's not going to happen. Thank you.
Next, please.
Thank you. My name is Donna Ruggles and I'm an affected property owner in the World Ward Field obstruction removal project. I have 17 trees tagged for removal. Yesterday, I asked Phil Miller, who's the aviation safety officer at Caltrans, about his visit on February 21st, his visit to Delmar County, since we didn't get an opportunity to talk to him. Anyway, I asked him for a copy of the aviation safety inspection report that all this is supposedly based on or tied to. So I read the report and I noticed the safety inspection report only references the seven-to-one transitional zone. That work has been done, even though we now know it was not required according to the non-conforming use airport zoning ordinance, and that's number 206480. But anyway, in your agenda discussion for today, I also noticed the 20-to-one transitional zone is referenced. You can't use a seven-to-one transitional zone safety inspection report to propose a 20-to-one transitional zone project. So Border Coast Regional Airport Authority and the county can't tie the Ward Field project to this report. So as I read the report, the inspection report, it says numerous trees penetrate the far 77, seven-to-one transitional surface for 175 feet. As far as the seven-to-one zones, all that is documented in the, okay, as far as those zones, all that is documented in the inspection report is a landscape photo with, photo four, with lines, red lines drawn over. That work has been done, even though we now know it was not required according to the non-conforming use airport zoning ordinance, and that's number 206480. But anyway, in your agenda discussion for today, I also noticed the 20-to-1 transitional zone is referenced. You can't use a 7-to-1 transitional zone safety inspection report to propose a 20-to-1 transitional zone project. So Border Coast Regional Airport Authority and the county can't tie the Ward Field project to this report. So as I read the report, the inspection report, it says, "Numerous trees penetrate the far 77 7-to-1 transitional surface for 175 feet." As far as the 7-to-1 zones, all that is documented in the...okay, as far as those zones, all that is documented in the inspection report is a landscape photo with, photo four, with lines, red lines drawn over. How is this supposed to illustrate which trees are penetrating? It looks like Mr. Miller did not perform any actual measurements, counts, or profiles. There's no map that identifies trees, and most importantly, there is no mention of the 20-to-1 surfaces, which comprises the bulk of Ward Field obstruction/removal project. This document is only useful for the SRA violations. Those are the runway surface areas, which are the containers, blackberries, and a pole, which is probably where the windsock used to be. It also mentions the runway and taxiway pavement beginning to ravel. The Planning Commission, who has jurisdiction according to the Delmar County Airport zoning ordinance, would have had to propose this project to the Board of Supervisors, but based on the Planning Commissioner's reaction at their last meeting, they had no knowledge of the proposed project. What appears to have happened here is that the county used the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority as a means of circumventing the Planning Commission in process of review.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
In the process of review, SEQA and the Wild and Scenic River Corridor review. Ward Field itself is in the Wild and Scenic River Corridor.
Thank you.
And in today's paper, I just wanted to show you, there's a full page, half-page announcing the McNamara Field project, and this is what we were looking for.
I'm really going to ask you to wrap it up here. Been over your time for a while.
Okay. Anyway, this is...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to give Donna further minutes?
That's not the way it works. Next, please.
Jamie Camden.
But Donna, I, on that last note that you had, I would encourage anybody to look at the newspaper that she's referring to.
Jamie Camden, Gasky resident. I would urge you to vote no for the funding. I've been told in the past to top or cut the trees on my property. I told them no. We have owls and other birds living in those trees, and I will deny entry.
Thank you. Next, please.
George Sullivan. That seems awfully complicated to me. I'm a pilot also, and that FAR Part 77 specifies the obstacle clearances and all the transitional zone out there and the height in relation to the approach into the runway. And if they don't comply with that, that airport's gotta be closed. So it's real simple to me, you know? Either they comply or else the airport's closed, you know? The FAR, the FAA will close it.
Thank you. Next, please. Okay, that's the list. Anybody that wasn't on the list, yes, please. Next. No, 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 no. Here's next, you're next after that. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Kathy Christensen. We own the Valhalla Apartments in Gasky, and this project's...I think everybody, everybody is being misled on the whole issue. We were told three or four years ago that they wanted to come in and take a fence down, a three-foot fence, at the Valhalla Apartments. And we asked, "Well, why is this?" And they told us that the only reason, they're not going to do any improvements to the Gasky Airport, but they needed to be in compliance with all of the county airports to make improvements solely on the Crescent City Airport. And so they came and took down, and this was Ernie Perry and Wilma. And so we said, "Well, if you took this fence down," and at the time, they told us, "You must be 125 feet from the middle of the runway into the property." Okay? And so we all got out our tapes, Ernie Perry, Wilma, and ourselves, and we marked it back. Well, that did not just include a chain-link fence that, you know, separated the property from the airport. That also includes a septic tank for 14 units. Okay? And so, once they realize that that 125 feet, which now it has changed the compliance to 175 feet, so it will never, ever, ever be in compliance, trees or no trees, just based on this commercial property alone, which was built in 1990. So by taking 100...
I hope Caltrans isn't listening to this tape.
You know, Caltrans was not even part of this equation when we were talking to Ernie Perry and Wilma, and, you know, they wanted to start with this commercial property, which is our living. That's how we make our living. We don't live in Gasky, but we have a lot of people that like to live in Gasky. That's our living. They don't want the trees cut down. But by going back 175 feet, that takes out a telephone pole or a power pole, an entire septic system for a 14-unit complex, including the other ones that we want to eventually put in, which we got approval on, by the way, and, and a pump house. But it also takes out the parking lot. So it also takes out a, the end of the parking lot, which is for fire prevention. If we had to get an emergency vehicle in there, that would eliminate the turnaround. So people are being so misled over this whole project. It has nothing to do with the safety of Gasky Airport. It has to do with trying to get a grant for the Crescent City Airport. And this is what we were directly told back then.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
So thanks, everybody. Thanks to all the Gasky residents that have put forth all this effort, you know?
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
We had another hand over here, I think.
My name is Gary Bendick. I live on Gasky Flat Road. I am not in favor of this tree topping and removal project. I think it's totally unnecessary as far as aircraft coming and going safely. I think this project is more about money, more than anything else. That's it.
Thank you. Next, I think one more over here. Okay, two more.
Andy Larson with County. I don't come educated on this subject real well. What I do know and what I haven't heard, how important is the Gasky Airport? You know, if we're not going to take the funding to at least not let somebody step in and shut it down, we don't have to. You can send funding back if you decide not to do it. It sounds like there's a lot of issues that need to be resolved, but losing the airport, I don't honestly haven't heard the debate on how important is that airport to Delmar County and that region. But I don't see...
I have an advisory.
Excuse me? I don't see turning funds away that you can turn, you can give back, you don't have to use it. I understand property owners, and I'm very much property right-oriented, but I really stand before you not as educated as that should be. But if that airport is important, we need to at least make the first step. We can always receive, but if you don't make the first step, you might be in a position that you can't take it and do anything with it.
Thank you. Next.
And good afternoon to you all. My name is Darrell Benoit. I own the property that is all along Firehouse Road, and then it also goes all the way down Gasky Flat Road. The 1-in-20 that they're speaking of, that's on the approach to the runway. Okay? And if we haven't done any review on that, then of course that needs to be done. That goes all the way down to...okay, you're aware of it.
Go ahead.
Okay, to the American Legion, far beyond the American Legion, and there's trees that are posted even farther down Gasky Flat Road. I know because I was standing there when the engineer was there, and I want to thank you for that assistance as to the height at the 1-in-20. We have the closed hangar and the open hangar that's on our property. So that hangar has been there for a long time. It is within 25 or 30 feet of that 1-in-20, the top of the hangar is. So when you do decide to come on out to Gasky, take a look at the height of things. You can use that hangar as an option to evaluate. It's been there. It's going to stay there as long as we own the property, and we've been there for 10 years. Anything else, you can get ahold of me. My name is Darrell Benoit.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't spoke already? You've already spoke?
But I didn't know I could speak during public comment.
You, that wasn't an option either. We're allowing people to speak once. Have you spoke yet, sir?
No.
Okay. I got a feeling you might have another bite at the apple in two weeks.
Mark Harris. My house is ironically the only house, it's on Gasky Flat Road. It's the only house that can boast probably the most important trees to be topped directly in the approach zone, that clearly penetrate, and also the only home that has actually had an airplane crash onto the deck after it hit a tree. So on that note, I will say I am invested in this. I would say mostly, I just, I'm actually a land use attorney. I've done a myriad of cases representing citizen groups in the past, and I really just want to just say that the comments from the Gasky group have been outstanding, very informed, I think very clear, and I want to thank them for that. I think we can all agree that the process here has been a little bit jump-started in perhaps a way that we all wish we could take back, but we can't. What I mostly want to do here, I wasn't actually even going to speak, I just wanted to clarify what one gentleman had said there and provide a resource. Number one, we have a website. There is actually a robust pilot community in Gasky. We actually have six hangared planes on-site, which is roughly half of what Crescent City has for private aircraft, is my understanding. And we also, we have, for example, a website, which, because it's not Gasky, it's Ward Field, I wanted to let people know about because there are lots of pictures of the airstrip from the various approaches, and it'll be really helpful to people as they go through this. And we hope to post documents from this and other proceedings in the future for folks to use. It's called wardfieldpilotsassociation.org. So folks want to take a look at that. It's interesting, and it's got a lot of pictures on it. Beyond that, I mostly simply wanted to say that my understanding is not what's going to happen in the future with these compliance or substantial compliance with Caltrans, but mostly it's about the money that the county already has. And my understanding at least is at this time, there is money here that has been accepted. There isn't necessarily a decision to be made as to what, whether to accept it or not. I think the agenda item was something of a misnomer. My understanding is that money was accepted and authorized back in 2012. And the gentleman who spoke just before me, he said, "You have the money, that is money that can be used or not used throughout the process and the planning that obviously is going to go forward before things happen here." I mean, you do require rights-of-entry from folks. No one here is saying otherwise. So I think the important thing is if I'm wrong about that, I'd like staff to clarify that perhaps and say to me, "Well, we haven't accepted the money," or something else. But I think the only mistake that could be made would be to say somehow, "We don't want that money," because that sends a directive to Caltrans that I think is a nonstarter. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll clarify that for you before I bring it back to the board. The resolution that was done in 2012 was to authorize to apply for the grant. This is to accept the monies for the grant as received. Heidi.
The resolution actually also authorizes the execution of the grant agreement by the airport director. I think this was discovered last Thursday after this board report went to the Board of Supervisors, and I think in order to be upfront with everyone, I think it was a better decision to get the public comment and then make the decision based on that, even though, I believe based on the resolution, it could be accepted.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Supervisor Sullivan, I'm going to ask you to go last.
Okay.
Supervisor Gitlin.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm looking at the discussion justification. I'm reading from here, quote, "The obstruction clearance would take place only on properties where assigned right-of-way has been secured." I'd want to know how many property owners, I believe there's 18 of them, how many of the 18 have actually signed this document? That would be something I'd want to know. And I guess my red-line question is, if we turn down this grant, does this start a process which decertifies Ward Field and opens up some unintended consequences? I would like that question clarified. I'm pretty sure I'm understanding the relationship between Caltrans Aeronautics, which is an, acts as, has a contract with FAA and speaks for FAA, and that's why I'm understanding there's not a SEQA process here. But I'd want to know if this grant is turned down in either now or in two weeks, does this begin a process where it, this opens up a, some unintended consequences where this airfield is then ultimately going to be closed?
If I may, I believe that to be the case, yes. That it could possibly start a process. And right now, the airport has 22 rights-of-entry, and three of those have been rescinded, so It is a complex, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Jim Bernard, the airport director. It is a very, as has been mentioned, very complex project, and we did specify with the right-of-entry that we would be doing surveys first, so we could tell people how much of their tree was going to be topped and whether or not it would be expected to survive. And to that end, we provided in our risk report. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Jim, we traded emails a little bit last night, and this project, and the issue I have with it right now, and obviously the residents too, is the process is extremely muddy. It's very murky. It hasn't been super transparent with the residents as to what's going on. And from when we had the meeting, I think it was last May in Gasky, with the residents to let them know in advance, this is, this is coming on, we were going to do a survey, there was a little over 100 trees that were talked about at that meeting that were going to possibly need to be removed or topped, and then all of a sudden, it's ballooned into 338 trees. And I understand how that happened, but the, I now understand how this has ballooned to the size it has because we were doing a full-blown survey, but I think it's caused nothing but confusion in the process. Now, people that are several, several hundred feet away from that airport, they're not even in the safety area, now are feeling they're going to have 17 trees taken out of their, or topped in their yard. And I think the original project was significantly smaller than that. And that's, that's the part, I think, has not been laid out to the residents, and it hasn't been very clear at all. In fact, the documents I've seen, even at the presentation, the meeting we just had out there, that we really need some horizontal pictures to show what the tree, what are we talking about? What are the essential trees that need to take out? Because I understand you have a minimum amount you've got to get out to at least make it a safe, usable airport for that, for that utility purpose, but beyond that, the scope of where it's at right now is, it's tremendous at this point, so.
The scope originally was for the 100 trees, and we mailed to the property owners affected detailed maps, which showed how many trees they had on their property. What we didn't know was how tall they were. That was what the survey was going to tell us, and we went ahead and surveyed everything so we knew how tall the trees were, even if they weren't in the first project.
Thank you, Jim. I'm gonna, Jerry?
Yeah, I think we've got, you know, a couple of issues that we're dealing with. One is accepting the money, and one is the project. So there's, there's two different things here, and basically, over two years ago, we already authorized to accept the funds and apply for the, apply for the grant. Now we've been awarded the grant, and we're, we're looking for public comment on the project. That's what it looks like to me. So we're dealing with the project at this point, not so much the authorization of accepting the money. And it doesn't look to me like we're going to be encroaching on anybody's property that doesn't give us the authority to do so. And taking down, I would think, being a pilot myself, having flown in there multiple times... myself, having flown in there multiple times, that we would be looking at the approach ends of the runway mostly, on each side, and then those trees that we have, you know, and that would include the authorization to get on those properties at the approach ends, but also those other properties that we have the authority to, or have the authorization to cut. And it sounds like there's enough money to do that, although this gentleman brought up a concern of mine when I was looking at the project. We're talking about $1,000 a tree, Jim? Is that, is that what we're looking at?
Bid, yeah. Hopefully.
And that would follow a bid process that we can either reject the bids, go back out to bid, or?
Right.
How many bidders?
Two.
Two bidders?
The other one was 700, I think.
Because we were uncertain as to whether-
Identify yourself, Roseanne.
Roseanne Bauer, Assistant Engineer. We were uncertain as to whether the property owners would have the preference of just topping their trees or would want them removed, so when we did the project, we bid it so that the property owner could potentially change their mind almost up to the last minute. It would require the county to inform the contractor of what action they were taking, but that is why it was more expensive, but I think it was in the best interest of the property owners.
Absolutely. I want to point out something, I actually correct myself, thank you, Heidi, that in 2012, two years ago, the board did pass a resolution, by resolution, that authorized for the filing of the application, it also authorized accepting the allocation of the funds for the project at Wardfield, certifies the availability of the 10% match from the county, and authorized execution of the grant agreement by the airport director. So, that's already been done, so any action would have to be to rescind that. Having said that, I agree that there's a lot of confusion, and it probably stems back from 2003, when community development and supervisors got together with some landowners out there who were very concerned about whether to have trees removed or trees topped, explained the glide path, and reached a compromise with Caltrans, where Caltrans actually had a variance to what the FAA required, Caltrans being the enforcement permitting agency here for FAA, and struck a deal with variances. Since that time, we have become aware the FAA has disallowed those types of variances by Caltrans with other airports. I think Rancho Marietta was one. There's a few of them, and I may be wrong on the Rancho Marietta. So, we've been criticized in the past, and I'm not saying we as this board, but other boards have been criticized, that we do part of the job, then have to go back and do some more of the job at a higher cost. So, when the funds were available, we decided to do the survey of the entire, just not the seven-to-one slope, but of everything. And that's where some of the confusion is. That was not the intent to remove all those trees, and again, you heard from Roseanne there stating that the specificity, we didn't specify whether it was to be topped or removed. A lot of that would be done in negotiations with the landowner, as long as it met the glide slope that was required by Caltrans. The, and it was Rancho Marietta. What needs to be, so, what we did is, we took care of business before, some of those trees have now grown back into airspace because they were topped. We went out and identified everything that could possibly be done within the seven-to-one as well as the 20-to-one, even though Caltrans didn't require it in '03. Seemed to be the prudent thing to do this time, although now it really got people all embattled. What hasn't been talked about enough is the alternative. The alternative is not to accept the grant, which unfortunately, we already passed a resolution to accept the grant two years ago. But if we didn't, the obligation to remove the trees and for the safety compliance and the financial responsibility for compliance would rest fully with the county. Not a good alternative. Mr. Bernard wrote an email to some of us here, and I'm just going to, part of it, if we choose not to accept the grant to show no intent to proceed, and this is, this is a grant that Caltrans says, just here's the money, take the grant, take three years to work with the community to see how best to implement with the funds that you have here. If we choose not to accept the grant and show no intent to proceed, although we have three years to do so, Caltrans would probably not issue a public use airport permit, they would stop paying the $10,000 a year that they do to the county for that airport, and would probably ask for the return of all grant monies that were expended out there and ask those to be returned to the state. Okay, so there's not only a loss of an airport, but extreme financial risk. So, really what we're talking about is an implementation of a federal safety regulation that is, the enforcement arm is Caltrans, who is incumbent upon the county because their airport, who sought some consultants and some making it work with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, who could just as easily dump it right back on the county. Clarify, though, that there already is a resolution accepting the funds. Yes.
The first phase of the work is trying to establish what variants we had to work we didn't do back in 2005.
Okay.
As far as they need, towards their variants, Caltrans, no rule on total ones, that's the way it's established.
So, this isn't expanding, it is cleaning up the work that we didn't do, according to the variance back then. Okay. I want to read, Jim, your recommendation before I turn it to Martha here, is to take the grant and to send back, send it back to the planning to work out the wild and scenic bugs.
I did have a question. So, your statement you made, the cleanup of the work you didn't do originally, is that 338, or is that 100, the number of trees? Are we talking, the original work should have been 300?
100.
100?
Yes.
Okay. I'd still like to, I mean, I-
I'm going to ask Supervisor McClure to speak for you.
There's a rule that if he moves to table, all discussion has to stop, so I'm hoping that I could have my turn, so thank you, Chairman Finnegan. I want us to possibly, I get that the Caltrans is talking about the Rancho Marietta Airport, but the Rancho Marietta Airport was also lighted and for night, and that was why they were saying the seven-to-one glide slope needed to be the 20-to-one glide slope because it was a nighttime airport, when I read the, when I read the court decision that they made.
Seven-to-one on their sides, and 20-to-one on their purchase.
Right, but they had a variance also.
Regardless of lighting.
But they had, they had the same variance that we had, and that variance was being revoked because of the nighttime landing. So, I'm hoping that we still center on the variance, and the variance allows the seven-to-one from the center of the airport out. And then the topping of the trees is the tree, that's pretty much what we've already done, but we're going to come back and do those trees again, is that correct?
We've left a bunch of trees or not done them.
And was that because we ran out of money, or because there is objection?
That's because we didn't do a survey.
Oh, okay. So, I'm in support of the community in relationship to finding a solution rather than moving forward without, you know, without taking care of all of the information, but I would like to point out a couple of things, and that the 113,000 is the maximum. So, if you were to spend $70,000, so it's a not to exceed, it's a maximum, and that the, to take a look at the regulation, the Part 77 regulation that requires the two glide slopes, the seven-to-one and the 20-to-one, that a variance can be applied for, and I guess I have a question, probably to Jim, is the variance still good? Because when I was reading about different variances, once they're issued, that's pretty much the end of the discussion. So, I think that the, I think that where people are taking a giant breath and saying, "Oh, my gosh, what are they doing?" is to, is as if the variance was no longer in existence, and if it were all the way out, and that's where people are seeing trees that were never before discussed, and wondering what in the world is up. The problem that I have is if we, it's a three-year window of time, of opportunity. So, I believe that we can postpone and make the date and have more information at the next meeting, but even if we approved and looked at the three years, the trimming may not happen until the third year, because all of the kinks may take that long to figure out and to identify which trees are topped. And I appreciate what Roseanna was saying, was that when they did, when they did the ask for the money, it was an ask that every tree that would be in, in the way of the pilot would be removed 100%, which is much more costly than the topping. So, it's, the goal is not to remove every tree, but those are the issues that are going to have to be worked out, and hopefully we'll have some answers to that maybe in two weeks, and at the same time, possibly be able to accept the grant and in a three-year period work out any kinks with the community.
With that, I'm going to actually move.
I just have one more question, if I could, and Heidi, I guess this would be directed at you, because I was a little confused about the lady who was the owner of Valhalla and the septic tank being an obstruction issue.
The leach field is on the airport, they have a lease for the leach field.
It was on the airport property?
It's on the airport property, and the fence that she spoke about was also on the airport.
So, that had nothing to do with the obstruction?
Correct.
No.
Clearance or?
Well, there were all obstructions, it had nothing to do with the trees, and it had nothing to do with Delmar County Airport.
Right. I was just confused about that whole situation, so I just wanted a little clarification.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to, I'm going to move to table item 17 and to the meeting of the 25th, and I would like, at that meeting, if we can have a presentation from staff as to, with visual presentation of what are we actually talking about on this first phase, to show us, and not in documents, give me some horizontal pictures too, to say, what is, what are we talking about on this map? Also, I'd like to know the repercussions if this thing isn't going, in terms of how much money the county is going to have to pay back on grant monies to Caltrans. Additionally, what the repercussions for the landowners also, I mean, as to not participating in this, in terms of if there's any liability for them individually outside of the county. I think that should all be put on the table at this point, and my willingness goes to the table this item with the idea that we are going to need, there is going to be a minimum number of trees that are going to be cut.
Did you table this?
Yeah, I did, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, anyway, that's, that's my thoughts behind it, is I'd like a presentation at the next board meeting on the 25th with an explanation, not convoluted, but a clear explanations for the residents to understand out there. And I'd like also, at the same time, a request to go to Caltrans for Mr. Miller to attend that meeting on the 25th, to answer questions from the board as well as the community.
I'm not sure you want Caltrans participating in this discussion. No. No, you don't want the heavy hand of them to tell you that, "Sorry, no variance." You work with the lines of communication you have going, which happens to be with, right now.
They're going to say, "Do the whole project."
That's right.
Right, that's all they can say.
Yeah, they're not going to say, "No, don't do the whole project."
But I believe they might be open to a variance for their approach course if we satisfy the first of variance.
Is there a second to the table, motion to table?
I'll second.
I'll second that. Okay, then all further discussion will stop. It will be placed, for clarification, it will be placed on the agenda of the 25th for a presentation from staff to articulate what has been brought out here today, that it's a cleanup from a prior one, what all is going to be involved. I'm going to point out that it will not be an action item to vote to receive the grant that was done in 2012. If there is to be a motion, it would have to be to rescind the grant, which is something after discussion, if that's what the direction you want to go. Well, I'm not going to even expound on that. Okay? So, next item.
If I might just also, if staff could make sure it be heavy on the visuals, so people have an idea what we're talking about, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, so let's go to legislative and budget matters.
Mr. Chair, I need to excuse myself, I have a plane to catch, so I'm not leaving because I'm not interested.
Okay. Then we'll be quick about, let's go to number 24 first, approve and authorize.
Chair, did we take a vote on the tabling? Did we poll the vote?
I don't think it requires a vote, once you have the motion and second.
You had a motion and a second.
That's all it takes to table. I know. Crazy rules, huh? Twenty-four is to approve and authorize a letter of support, California AB 2703, opposing submitting a letter, one-time increase of pension funding, made permanent funding, we're talking for the California County Veteran Services Officer, as requested by the Veteran Services Officer.
He wasn't able to attend today, but the, this is basically to request that funds that were received on a, as a one-time subvention be included for numerous years.
I'm going to ask you guys, as you're leaving, to please keep it down so we can finish our business. Thanks.
This is primarily to augment outreach to the veterans in our community, and they're hoping that they can continue this funding in future years.
Move for approval. Moved.
Second.
Moved to second and public comment, bringing it back to the board for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, carries unanimously. Twenty-five is to approve and authorize, chair has signed a letter of support regarding sentencing guidelines for environmentally destructive marijuana trespass grows, as requested by Congressman Huffman's office. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved to second and further discussion, public comment, back to the board. All those in fa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, carries unanimously. Number twenty-six, approve and authorize a letter of support of SB 1410, which funds PIL, payment in lieu of taxes for California fishing wildlife.
Yeah, Senator Nielsen and Senator Wolk have-
Bipartisan effort.
Yeah, it's a bipartisan effort to require that fishing game actually pay their, to pay us up, the $600,000 plus that they owe, as well as other counties, as well as ongoing funding, for them to continue to pay, payment in lieu of taxes. In other words, all the land they own in the county, they're supposed to pay PIL money to help provide services in the community, and they have not, based on just semantics of, it's been budgeted but not appropriated, which is, it's wrong. So, this bill would solve that issue, the county would begin to get the funds in for that, and offset a lot of our needs.
Good. Yeah, as Mike Supervisor Sullivan said, this bill would appropriate $19 million plus an additional $2 million annually to continually to fund payment in lieu of taxes. Further discussion? Public comment? Is there a motion?
Move, move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously, and let's jump back to item 23 regarding miscellaneous legislative or budget matters, Purnit County, Delmar.
There have been a number of alerts that have come through recently through our advocates, and at this point, the letters that are before the board today are the primaries, we'll be looking and analyzing at a couple of these. Lately, the primary push that has been sent to us are drought relief and groundwater monitoring. So, those obviously are not applying as much to Delmar County at this point. We'll continue to monitor those and bring those to the board.
Good, and I forwarded an email to Heidi U at CDD, "Don't say that groundwater monitoring doesn't apply to us, because what will happen if we don't stay in the conversation is they will have a state agency that will start imposing regulations for groundwater monitoring statewide or regional-wide, and we don't want one size fits all."
Understood. That comment is more for drought relief at this point.
Right, right. They go wild, as you know, because, for example, today, a bill was introduced to allow motorized skateboards, electric skateboards in bike lanes, which have been prohibited in the past. So, the legislature, left with too much time to do, will come up with all sorts of things. So, anything else? All right, then let's go to number 27, receive and file them into your budget update as submitted by CAO and the Audit Controller.
So, the report before you today addresses the current projections from each department in the general fund. Currently and collectively, we're looking at running in the black with the projections, knowing full well that the next few months are the most critical in any of our budget years. years. That's typically when we find out whether or not there will be any discrepancies in revenues or expenditures. Typically, it's the revenues that we're primarily worried about, whether or not we receive those or not. There are a couple of issues that are outlined in the report that we're attempting to address. I guess on the good side, the...some of the issues in the jail and sheriff budget have been projected to be somewhat alleviated with some additional bed space through Shasta County, which is something that we lost last year when numbers decreased. There are a few other positives in regards to AB 109 and funding. The primary concern right now is the engineering department with the community development department, or division inside the department, primarily projects that have been delayed that typically staff time would have been budgeted towards and would have been offset with reimbursement. Those are the types of issues that come up typically through a budget year, and we will have to address those through the next budget if we have a deficit.
Okay. Very good. Questions?
No, I'm glad to hear...I mean, I know when I first got to the board, the department heads weren't quite as responsive to making sure that their budget was put together, and the current department heads have been very good about that. We appreciate the work they've been doing to make sure your budget's intact and staying within your budget.
Good. Appreciate that. That's the end of the business that we have, without setting any precedent, and people speaking twice a public comment period, and without acknowledging the fact that it's been tabled because you drove so far. Becky, do you want a final word? Well, you said you wanted to say something, and now I'm gonna let you. I know you're startled. I'm not setting a precedent.
And can you tell it's my first time? You...Gasky residents forwarded to board supervisors copy of the airport zoning ordinance. Have you had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Non-conforming uses? Did you get the impact of non-conforming uses?
Yeah. In fact, as a homeowner, we went through that as realtors.
Because if your tree was there in 1980, you never had to cut it. Harold Martin never allowed permission, right of entry. Maybe he knew, maybe he didn't. He enjoyed every tree on his property till the day he died. They came around and bullied his wife, Pat. She signed right of entry. She's gonna rescind as soon as she gets home from Hawaii.
Okay.
We take care of each other in Gasky. Harold Martin didn't want those trees cut. His wife didn't understand. That's not okay. So there's that. Because according to your own ordinance, a beautiful, beautiful document, even if you were in the process of building a home in 1980, high as you wanted, you had until 1982 to finish it before it kicked into non-conforming use.
Yeah.
So, and after that, a tree beyond 1980 you grew, you planted, and in 2050, you're in airspace. You can apply for a variance. You go through the planning department. The planning commission is the administrator of the airport zoning ordinance. Right of entry? There's right of entry granted onto property. There's also right of entry to come onto property to survey.
Right.
Totally violated, that's another ordinance.
Okay.
Sheriff Dean Wilson?
Don't make me regret inviting you back up to this microphone.
Our 89 Bronco is currently sitting down at the Forest Service office because Mike thought it was the relay, but it's not. Luckily, he can walk back and forth on the...
Really, Becky? Come on.
Okay. What was I saying?
All right, we're gonna...
Right, no. Right of entry has been violated. The ordinance hasn't been followed in several cases. Sheriff Dean Wilson advised Gasky residents to post those trespassing signs, and on the advice of Sheriff Dean Wilson, some have. I just thought maybe you need to know that. And other Gasky residents who attended the May 2013 meeting have told us, Airport Director Jim Bernard said at that meeting, don't sign right of entry.
Okay.
Appreciate the opportunity, Sheriff Finnegan.
It won't happen again.
I have more. I have more.
Thank you, Becky.
I'll see you on the 25th.
Okay. I'm just gonna very briefly talk about, trees grow, so you can't exempt them ad infinitum if they get into airspace. We have our county ordinances that we try to enforce. Unfortunately, we are a subdivision of the state who then has to answer to the feds. So what we might allow and allow on a variance, and this is what you're seeing from the feds now, is telling the state, no, you can't. But having said that, staff has done an excellent job in the past and will continue to do so of working with the local residents to do the most non-optrusive solution in order to have Caltrans certify, continue to certify our airport. Okay? Meeting adjourned. Thank you for all coming.